So I'm going to call the meeting to order. It is 8:31 on Wednesday, November 16th. This is the State Board of Education. And we can start with Suzanne, if you wouldn't mind doing a roll call.
Yes, sure. Patrick Brown.
Present.
Kim Gleason. Tammy Colby.
Good morning.
Good morning Suzanne. Sorry, it's Kim and I was muting, unmuting, muting.
Okay. Good morning. Lyle Jepson.
Present.
Tom Lovett.
Present.
Gabrielle Lucci.
Here.
Jenna O'Farrell.
Present.
Jennifer Samuelson.
Here, good morning.
Amira Severson.
Present.
Dan French.
Morning.
All right, are there any amendments to the agenda? Okay, so hearing none. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard? Does appear that someone maybe from the public has their hand raised. If you can identify yourself. If there's someone who wants to speak for public comment, we can't hear you.
They just allowed their mic.
All right. Well, we can-
Hi, can y'all hear me?
Yes, yes, good morning.
Can you hear me? Oh, thanks so much. Sorry, I jumped on on my phone and I'm just having a hard time unmuting myself. My name is Dan Morris. Is it okay for me to comment as a member of the public?
Yes. Go ahead.
That's great, thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity. So I'm calling in as a resident of Northfield and a member of the Payne Mountain School Board and a member also of the CVSU Board. And I just wanted to say thanks to you all for reading the letter that I wrote and attached to the packet. I appreciate the ability to weigh in on the issue of Lincoln. And I just wanted to say, the conversation so far has been largely around efficiencies and whether or not merging Lincoln with CVSU would make for more efficiencies. And I understand the reason why we look at efficiencies. But I hope that that's not the only thing that we're thinking about in this conversation. I hope we're also thinking about equity and merging Lincoln with CVSU would not be equitable. It would be taking a district that is relatively privileged and putting it with a district that is struggling really hard with issues of taxation and test scores and things like that. And CVSU doesn't need another challenge on top of those things. So it wouldn't be equitable to merge CVSU and Lincoln. And the other thing that I hope we can think about a little bit here is autonomy. It strikes me that Lincoln has had a lot of autonomy in this process. They've been allowed to decide what their fate is going to be within certain parameters. And CVSU hasn't had the same level of autonomy. We wouldn't even get a vote on this, which is, means they have a lot more ability to decide what happens to them than we do. And it, you know, it doesn't seem like there's a good reason for that. So I just want to say, I hope the State Board of Ed could consider something other than just efficiencies. Please do also consider equity and autonomy. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, excuse me, thank you, Mr. Morris. Are there any other members of the public who wish to be heard? So we can leave this agenda item open for another, I think we started it a little bit early, but we can leave it open for another 10 minutes or so. But in the meantime, I'm going to go ahead and move on to Agenda Item C. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from our October 19th, 2022 meeting?
So moved.
All right, was that Lyle who moved?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I seconded Patrick.
Seconded by Patrick. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes for our October 19th, 2022 meeting, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If there are any nays, please signify by saying nay and raising your hand. Okay, hearing none. It appears that the motion to approve our October 19th, 2022 meeting minutes has been unanimously approved. Thank you. And then, moving on, are there any board announcements?
I just, if I can, Jennifer?
Sure.
I just wanted to take a second to just appreciate the opportunity to have attended the VSB conference, which was really focused on how are the students doing? And among the opportunities to sort of engage with those in the field as superintendents and school board members, it really, they brought in terrific speakers, had some focus conversation, had the opportunity to listen in a conversation around the field's considerations for EQS. So again, taking in more information in our process. The Bess O'Brien film, The Listen Up Project, I'm not sure if any of you have had the opportunity to watch that. They screened that the second morning and it was incredibly impactful. I think we are always asking that question among ourselves here. And I am happy to reach out to press. I don't think it'd be something we would, we would screen in a meeting, but rather, I am thinking I may be able to get access for us as individuals to watch it on our own time. It was really powerful and did a beautiful job of sharing how students are feeling often these days. So if that's of interest, I'd be happy to do that.
Kim, because I've not seen the movie, but was that specific to Vermont or?
Yes, they're Vermont students. And it was a project of, Bess did the screen writing, but then it was embellished in and bringing student voice and then student acting and directing and really an engaged experience for those students. And the structure she provides and the support she provides allowed for their work to be brought to the final product. So it's about an hour and a half, if I'm remembering correctly. Yeah, I think it's about an hour and a half. And I, even if I end up buying the screenplay and sharing it with you guys, I'll do that. But I know they're providing it to school districts to be, you know, screened in their communities. So I am happy to reach out directly and see if there's access for our board to watch on our own time, if that's of interest.
Sure.
Sure. Great.
Great, thank you. And then I attended the Roland Foundation as well. And Dr. Goldie Mohammed was amazing and speaking of students and equity and joy in the educational system. So pretty inspiring events and I was grateful to have been able to attend.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
The other board announcement I wanted to bring up is, I'm sure you all have seen the email from Oliver Olson indicating that he has stepped off the board. So that was sort of a late arriving email. And I think what I'd like to do is maybe put something on the agenda in December to do a resolution in his honor. But I will just take a moment right now again to thank Oliver for his many years of service and his guidance of the board, because I think we all benefited under his leadership. So thank you. Any other board announcements? Jenna? And then Tom.
So going back to what Kim said, Bess O'Brien did a film, or did a play years ago too, with teens in Vermont. And I forgot the name of that one off the top of my head, but Bess meets with kids locally here in the Northeast Kingdom frequently around different focus groups. And Listen Up was a play, it actually toured the summer, last summer, not this past summer, summer before. And I had seen it and I think I mentioned it at the board level, but I don't know if anybody else saw it live, but it was pretty amazing. And her work is pretty powerful and it does an incredible process around engaging youth. And that process of how Listen Up was done during the pandemic and having kids engaged in writing was pretty amazing. It's amazing, so I support what Kim said. If you can see it, see it. Second of all, I just wanted to hold space for the board to take a minute to acknowledge Peter Pelz. Peter Pelz passed away in October. His family released his obituary yesterday. Kim and I served with Peter on the board and he was, he's just amazing. And those who knew Peter, I'm sure appreciate him, his passion, his many talents that he had and his contributions to education. He served on Woodbury Board, Hazen Board, he was active in CTE work and he was a legislator and was on the education committee. I can keep going. I just think the world of Peter. So I just wanted to have the board acknowledge that.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. I'd not heard that news. And we overlapped a little bit when I came on before he went off. And I do remember fondly his leadership on the board. So I'm really sorry to hear about his passing.
Thank you Jenna for sharing. And thank you to Peter for his years of service to our state.
Tom?
Yeah, just quickly, I was at the National Merit Scholarship Board meeting last Monday and educators from around the country speaking about what's going on with our schools and young people. I just thought I'd share the top 10 takeaways for things that we see, see in Vermont too. I think these will resonate with us. Schools are moving forward out of the pandemic, but they're seeing an increased immaturity in students in social, emotional learning, academic resilience and just overall mental health, even though mental health was an issue around that board table even before the pandemic. Schools really making progress on DEI. They're noticing that a number of students are really missing the kinds of skills they would have picked up in middle school, coming to high school with very little executive function. They, they all bemoan the kind of toxic rhetoric and how politics have entered school board meetings. The college admissions process and the aggressive early decision application process is also affecting high school students. People concerned about staff mental health and staffing shortages. And then reining in some of the things that would just let go during COVID and trying to bring order back to schools. They called it raining in the rogue from COVID. And then that the SAT is going totally online, which will have a major impact on states like Vermont. And so I thought those were pieces of information that will resonate with us, but also might pose some additional problems for our state.
Tom, I know we've talked about how standardized test scores sort of at the K to 12 level have dropped in response to COVID. Is there a sort of core, like a corollary with SAT scores? Like was there a drop off or fewer students who qualified for national merit this year?
No, no, not at the national merit side, but there's a great drop off in number of test takers. As colleges go test optional or test blind in their admissions, many students are choosing not to take the SAT. And also, there's an increased number of students going into employment as there are more job opportunities for 18 to 25 year olds who are going right into the workforce.
Well, thank you for that update. Any other board announcements or questions, comments? All right, well, thank you guys. Let me just circle back to see if there are any members of the public who might have joined us who wish to be heard. I will keep that open for a couple more minutes.
Excuse me, Chair Samuelson? I just want to remind everybody that if they're dialed in, that they need to hit star five to raise their hand.
Thank you. Okay, so in the meantime, I'm going to go forward with the student report. So Gabrielle, I'll start with you.
All right, can everyone hear me? All right, good, good morning. I don't think I really have that much to report aside from that I've been noticing some student academic stress relating to certain, relating to like classwork and things they need to complete. I definitely think that our upcoming fall break is going to help with that. I've also noticed that while it's been present the entire year, there seems to be a bit of an uptick in certain verbal harassment at our, at our school. It tends to be towards marginalized groups such as females, LGBT people and BIPOC people. And I just, I don't know exactly how to combat that issue. It's been something that's been affecting our schools for a long time, but I definitely like to find some way to truly fight back against it because any form of harassment is not okay and it's still happening. And I think something needs to be done. But other than that, that's all I have to report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any comments or questions for Gabrielle? Kim?
Okay, here we go. Gabrielle, sorry, good morning. Are there processes in place or resources and buildings that are sort of made front and center in terms of awareness for those who might want to align and support and help and combat that? Or is that not something that students would be aware of?
We do have a social justice group that just formed last year. It's in the process of being deemed an official club. As far as like processes that, to like, to combat it, like with the administration, like to let them know that this is happening, we do have those. But a lot of times it depends on the individual, whether they feel comfortable enough to speak up. Because a lot of times, these behaviors go unnoticed because the individual is, feels too afraid to say something.
Thank you for sharing. That sounds very challenging.
Patrick?
Yeah, just to follow up on that, one of the effective or most effective strategy is that if each school markets to the students that their reports are confidential, if they identify discrimination in any form, if they report it, even if they're not the intended person, but just their observation. And so the school should notify the students that their comments, their observations will be confidential, they will be in a protected class. And so this will be more inviting for students to come forward to speak to the principal or the counselor on what they've noticed. And so, for example, in the Burlington school system, when there is harassment of BIPOC students, the way that that is disclosed is that the white students go to the administration or go to their parents and tell them what their observation is. And that's how these things come to light.
Thank you, Patrick. Any other comments or questions for Gabrielle? All right, so Amira, I'll turn it over to you.
Hi, so can you guys hear me all right? Okay, just, just making sure. So for my student report today, so my experience and my CTE is a lot different than it is with Gabrielle. I'm pretty sure Gabrielle, correct me if I'm wrong, but like, does Gabrielle go to a CTE school? Okay, so because I'm in a very secluded, more individualized, like program kind of atmosphere, I don't really experience, or not that I, it could happen, but I don't see as much as Gabrielle sees as of that. So for my student report, I'm on my school board for the Central Vermont Career Center and we just became our own district. So I'm on that school board. And a student report I have is more like student funding for our program. In my cosmetology program, we make money for all of the services we do inside of our program. And all of our services, what gets charged for our services, they get put into the school, they get put towards the school. But the tips we make, they get put towards, like we don't get our tips. They get put towards some other part of the school. So what I'm working on is to try to make it to where we make our own money. Because it would be considered child, it's considered a type of child labor in, in a way, to have us work. And I, and I get we're under a licensed professional, but I necessarily, and a lot of us in our class don't necessarily think it's fair. But it, it is basically kind of what it is. Another thing too, that we're also talking about is funding for a lot of our career programs here. I just had a school board meeting the other day with our administrators on our school board. And we are talking about the funding that we need to take place to continue our programs like natural resources and cosmetology to keep going, opposed to all of our other high end programs like DMA that needs tons and thousands and thousands of dollars of equipment a year. So me and my school are trying to work together to work on funding and work on, to where that's more, that's more or less of it that we're trying to work on right now. Like I said, I don't have very much for this student report. It's, it's like in my seat, it's very hard to find something to, you know, report about that hasn't already taken place or that has been brought to action and done. So yeah, we're in the process of working towards funding and making sure that we are A-OK for the next school year. That's really it.
How many people are in your program, Amira?
14. And we have the budget of eight students.
So can you explain that discrepancy?
Yes, so throwback to a couple of years before COVID, we had, in the cosmetology center, we could only have eight students per teacher. So with the eight students, we had a good budget from when we had eight students. And then BUSD, because we were still under their district, they were like, hey, we're going to double every student, we're going to double your program. So our program doubled in size of students, but our budget did not. So that's what we're trying to work for is to get, you know, if you want more students and if you want my teacher, if you want our teachers to be able to teach more students, we need to be able to have, you know, the money to be able to get equipment, to get curling iron, stuff like that, to be able to teach the program. Because without the tools, you don't really have anything to teach. It's really what we're working on.
And with your program, the money that you're making right now, you don't really get to see any of it because you're still a student. But is there, like at a certain point during the program, will you get to keep any of the money or is it really upon graduation?
We don't know. It's really, it's, it's really sad, but it's also up in the air. Like we don't know really, we get told they go into our student accounts, but we don't know what goes, what we use our student accounts for. Like we can't buy our own tools with it because it has to go through the school. We can't buy, like, it's, it's all just, I think, we use it for like an end of the year trip, I believe. But like personally, I would love to be able to keep my money because I worked for it and I worked really hard for it. And it gives you the taste of like what the real world like is. Like I understand not giving us all the money for all of our services, but like maybe just like the tips, but I'm, I'm not too sure. I don't know the laws around it like in depth though. So I don't know a lot about it, but that's what I'm really trying to work on and to understand from both sides' point of views, from students and the faculty.
Thank you. Lyle, I see the question.
Sure, and I of course love the tech center, so thanks for the report, Amira. Can you test right in your school? So can you take the state board exam within your school so that when you leave, you actually will have your license?
Yes, so our school provides us the ability to go to Burlington to take our state board test. It is not funded from the school. It is funded from, we partner with a different corporation to be able to fund for our state board test. It's $151, I believe, for your first time. And then if you fail it and you have to keep re-taking it, it goes up in price. So that's why our school doesn't necessarily fund it. But our school does fund, if you come from a sending school, they fund for your entire program. So yes, we are, we get the ability, like the first week after you graduate from cosmetology through the tech center, you can go take your test.
So you can, you can earn sufficient hours through, I assume it's a two-year program that you're in?
Correct, yes.
So you can earn sufficient hours? And I don't know what it is anymore, 2,000 or something?
1,000.
1,000, yeah.
Yep.
Well, that, that's a great opportunity.
Yeah, I absolutely love our tech center. I love the ability, like I love the opportunities we get from here that you don't really see a lot of other places. So that's why I really love, I really love it here.
So just because this is a great advertising opportunity for tech centers, how much is a, I won't call it a haircut, but when somebody comes in to have a perm, for example, how much, how much do you charge? Or how much do they charge outside the school?
So it depends. So in our school, we charge $65 per perm. And then it really depends on where you go outside, like if you go to a salon, because it's all what the stylist is willing to do. Because personally, I hate perms. I, they smell really bad. I've no offense if anybody has a perm, but they, they're not my favorite.
They smell for days and days, they smell.
Yeah, and they get stuck to your clothes, the smell sticks, oh, okay. So I know a lot of places still charge $250 per perm because they simply don't like doing it, but they will as long, you know, they'll charge good, good money for service. And a lot of people, they're like, they won't find people who are willing to do perms. So, though, they'll do that.
Okay, so not to belabor this, but you're talking my talk now because it sounds like a perm might be three hours and that could be $75 an hour.
Correct.
Or more.
Correct.
Okay, everybody out there, new career opportunity. Congratulations on being part of that program. That's great.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Amira? Or we can circle back to Gabrielle? All right, well, Amira and Gabrielle, thank you both for your student reports. I often say, and I think everyone would agree with me, that this is oftentimes the highlight of our meeting. So thank you. And then before we close out the public comment section, I will just circle back one last time to see if anyone has joined in the last couple of minutes who wishes to be heard. And just as a reminder, if you're on your phone, you need to push star five to unmute. Okay, well, with that, we will move on to item F, which is Lincoln. And I know we have a lot of people who are here. I've asked representatives from CVSU, White River Valley SU, MAUSD, Lincoln is also here. So they are on hand to answer any questions. And I thought before we start our discussion, I prepared a slideshow and Maureen and Suzanne were kind enough yesterday to do a dry run with me, so it should work. So without further ado, I'm going to get that up and loaded. So without further ado, I'm gonna get that uploaded. Well? Okay, can you all see it? So since I'm sharing my screen, I obviously can't really see if anyone has any questions or comments. So if you have anything, just, you know, shout out. But so this is our discussion regarding the provision of supervisory union services to the Lincoln School District. And just as a reminder, the procedural background, on May 18th, members of the Lincoln, the self-selected representatives, appeared before the state board and requested to withdraw from the MAUSD pursuant to the former version of 16 VSA Section 724. The state board agreed to that request and reconstituted the Lincoln School District. And pursuant to the former version of Section 724, which governed our decision-making that day, Lincoln's withdrawal shall be fully effective on July 1st, 2023. So they did not get the benefit of the one-year extension that would have come under the new version. And, you know, we talked about that, everyone was fully aware, and they wanted to proceed under the former version. We had tentatively set a deadline of our September board meeting to determine the provision of supervisory union services. But it became clear at that meeting that we didn't have all of the information that we needed, and no good options emerged. So we postponed the decision to today's meeting. But at the end of that meeting, we identified five possible options and requested additional information from Central Vermont, White River Valley, MAUSD, and the Lincoln School District. And we also recommended a, or we requested a recommendation from the AOE. Just in the interest of clarity, the fifth option was forming a supervisory union with Ripton. And of course, that is no longer an option, since Ripton voted to rejoin the ACSD. So you guys all have in your agenda packet responses from each SU, SD that's at issue, as well as a recommendation from the Agency of Education. You also have public comment that has been coming to me over the last month or so. And I just want to pause here and acknowledge the vast amount of work that has been done by each supervisory union, supervisory district, Lincoln, the Agency of Education, the many, many members of the public who took the time to write in to the state board. There was a phone call in. There's been a lot of interest around this topic, and clearly, this is something that is important to a lot of people. And I think, you know, it has really helped to inform the discussion that we're gonna have. So I just, I want to thank everybody for all of their hard work that they put into this. With regard to the state board, we are responsible for determining supervisory union configurations, which includes the ability to create and dissolve SUs, to assign and reassign school districts to existing SUs, and then also to declare school districts to be their own supervisory district. In that decision-making, we have broad discretion in the exercise of our authority. So just to recap, the four options on the table for our discussion, one is to assign Lincoln to Central Vermont Supervisory Union, one is to assign it to White River Valley Supervisory Union, the next, the third one is to deconstruct Mount Abe and assign the Lincoln School District to a newly-created supervisory union. And then the final option is to designate the Lincoln School District as its own single-district SU. And just as a visual, because some people think more in visual terms, option one really shows what would happen if we assigned Lincoln to a pre-existing SU. Option two is what would happen if we deconstruct MAUSD. And then the third option is, you know, visually what it would look like if Lincoln were a standalone supervisory district. And then, just schematically, this is sort of the organizational flow chart for a typical supervisory union. And I should mention here, I actually borrowed these slides from Oliver Olson from a presentation that he'd done a few months ago. So save me some time putting this together. So that just kind of shows the general organizational structure for a supervisory union as opposed to the structure that's typical for a supervisory district. And then, just to ground our discussion, I thought it would be helpful to throw up the relevant provisions of statute. So Section 261 (a) provides the state board with broad authority to regroup SUs or to create new SUs. And the guiding principles here are to afford increased efficiency or greater convenience and economy, and to facilitate pre-K through grade 12 curriculum planning and coordination. Section 261 (c) allows the state board to designate any school district, including a unified Uden School District, as an SD if it will provide for the education of all resident students in grades pre-K to grade 12, which Lincoln will, and if it is large enough to support the planning and administrative functions of an SU. I also thought it'd be helpful to just put up many of the duties that are noted in 16 VSA Section 261(a) that would be required of a supervisory union board, which includes, among other things, curriculum, receiving and dispersing state and federal funds, providing for professional development opportunities, providing special education services, employing qualified staff, and also providing resources to handle matters such as distribution of goods and services, construction projects, transportation, and teacher contract negotiation. Section 261(a)(b) also encourages SUs to reach agreements with other SUs to jointly provide services or perform any duties under the section. So it gives a supervisory union or supervisory district the authority to contract with other SUs for any or all of those duties that are required by statute. So finally, I think where we land today is that the Agency of Education has recommended, and the Lincoln School District has requested, that we designate the Lincoln School District as its own supervisory district pursuant to 16 VSA Section 261 (c). The data and analysis from the documents provided by the Agency of Education, CVSU, WRVSU, and MAUSD under 16 VSA Section 261(a)(a) show little, if any, gains in efficiency or convenience and economy. And all four reports highlight the challenges to pre-K to grade 12 curriculum planning and coordination that would occur if the Lincoln School District were assigned to one of those SUs or STs. So that is not a foregone conclusion. You know, this was just my effort to sort of distill a lot of information that we received, but that's certainly open for discussion. And then, keeping in mind that, you know, in all of this, we need to keep our focus on what's best for the students and the state. So I'm gonna stop presenting and go back to this. Okay. So I'm done sharing my screen, correct? All right. So let me open it up for comments, questions, thoughts, concerns. Tom?
Yeah. I noticed in the communication from Don Griswold from MAUSD that they, they welcome Lincoln rejoining that SD. And I'm wondering if the decision recommended by the agency and requested by Lincoln, if that precludes that action, if they become their own district? Or could they, could they follow the same route that Ripton did and rejoin?
So they can't follow the same route that Ripton did, because Ripton was operating under the new version of Section 724, which would allow a town such as, you know, Ripton, what they did, or what, if Lincoln had proceeded under the new version of Section 724, it would allow a school district to unilaterally decide, you know, through a vote of its town, to rejoin its supervisory district. Lincoln didn't do that, so if they wanted to rejoin Mount Abe, they would have to vote to do that, and then every other member of town would also have to vote to let them back in. Dan, do I have that right?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, the Ripton provision was a different provision. They would, this, what you're alluding to, Tom, would fall back on the regular merger statutory language. The other point I'd emphasized is that I would strongly encourage the board to make a decision today on the SU assignment. This has been put off a couple of months, rightfully, to gather more information. But in the interest of administrating a school district, the decision should be made today, if possible.
Thank you. Kim, and then Tammy.
Hey, it's elusive. I can't quite get there on this, unmute. I just wanted to say, I think, echoing Dan's concern about timeline, but also, the process for rejoining under the law, even as it had been before, requires study and a different process than had been available for Ripton because the vote took place under the old law. And so there's nothing that we could do in the next even couple of months that would give them an opportunity to go back. They just didn't have the same path available, based on when the vote was taken. So there's no reason to delay, nor would there be anything any more complicated about them pursuing a merger, right, by being their own supervisory district. The process is going to be the study and vote of all communities as it would be regardless. There was no option that Ripton had available to them under this version. No reason to delay, in my opinion.
Thank you. Tammy?
Good morning. I was encouraged by the letter from Lincoln and also the secretary's recommendation. I do think that this is probably what's best interest of the state in students. That said, I think we also have to acknowledge, especially after the conversations we have with Ripton over the summer, that this is, that there's a lot of complications involved. There's a lot of work to be done between now and next July. I'm curious, and I'm remembering some conversations we had during the Ripton process, so I'm curious if they might apply here, too. If there was an option for the board to request a status update or some sort of monitoring process of Lincoln's progress toward becoming its own SD between now and next July, if in fact, we were to sort of approve that recommendation today? But I think, I certainly would like to be able to understand how that process evolves for them, the kind of work that gets done, so that we have some assurances that, in fact, by July 1st, they're gonna be ready to go. Again, just remembering the difficult conversations we have with Ripton this summer, and certainly Lincoln was part of that. And that's not to say that I have any specific concerns with them being able to pull this off, but at the same time, there is a lot of work to be done, a lot of hard work. And I do feel as if, you know, if there's a way for us to monitor or sort of have status updates on that along the way, that would be really helpful for us to be able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dan, I don't know if you or anyone on your team wants to jump in and respond to that?
Yeah, no, I think it's a point of consideration for the board. I would just qualify Tammy's thinking maybe a little bit. You're basically creating a supervisory union district through action today. It's not a question of them being ready. It would, it would be enacted, it would be created. But certainly, I think the board, all the effort you've put into this process would have some interest in understanding how it's going and perhaps requesting the Lincoln Supervisory District, if that's enacted, that they come back at some point, provide you some status report on how it went.
Okay, thank you. Other comments, questions?
What if they, what's the process if they get into this and realize that maybe fiscally can't support this situation as a standalone? What can they do?
Dan, I'll ask you to answer that as well?
Yeah, well, it's hard to answer the hypotheticals, but, you know, I think the case of where a school district, either through the voters' action or the state board itself, could then reexamine the composition of the supervisory union.
I had a couple of points that I wanted to sort of raise, just in the interest of, you know, having a comprehensive discussion here. With regard to the report that was submitted by the Lincoln School District, they did mention that they were raising money. And so I just want to put out there that as long as it's the school district that's raising the money, that's fine. If it were the town, that would be more of an issue. And certainly, if there were any questions, I think the Agency of Education would be a terrific resource about, you know, how to go through this and make sure that they're doing it properly. Similarly, they reference a timeline to submit proposals for special ed funding. And this wasn't clear to me either, although this is also something else that they might want to talk to the agency about for further clarification and help. And also, my understanding is that they need to follow the new version that's in place for 16 VSA Section 1804 regarding collective bargaining after withdrawal. So, Lyle, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you. I guess maybe two things. I had a concern about sustainability. If fundraising in an external way is going to be part of the financial stack, so I'd be interested to hear, if someone's on the line, about where they're going to get that funding, or what their target will be. And then, my second question is, and I don't know who will answer this, what makes Lincoln's requests significantly different than Ripton's so that we will be making a decision to allow them to go on their own? So maybe, maybe that's an essay question.
So with regard to your second question, I mean, certainly, we did find that Ripton, we created Ripton as its own supervisory district, so, and I think Lincoln is larger. So we definitely have that past experience that we have followed. But I think maybe, I did see that Jen Oldham, who is the chair of the Lincoln School Board, if she wants to jump in and respond to your questions. And then also, I don't know if you have any comments, Jen, about any of the issues that I raised, but you can certainly speak to those as well. I thought she was online. Or anyone else from Lincoln? Oh, there she is.
Here I go. Can you hear me? Yes, okay. So yes, thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here and to talk more about this. So just specifically to the question about the fundraising. The fundraising that is going on is to support the cost to transition to be a, until we get till July 1, when we will have a pass budget and we will have tax revenue to actually operate the supervisory district. So the private money will not be part of our ongoing operations. It will only support the consultant be part of our ongoing operations. It will only support the consultants and the services that we need to engage between now and and July 1. And we have we began a sort of soft campaign, if you know what fundraising jargon, we began our soft campaign in August. And we've been waiting for a decision from the SBE to know what we were raising money for for the next period. So whatever decision is taken here, we'll begin the the launch of the hard campaign that will continue until July 1 to support those costs. And we are able to whatever expenses are not able to be covered by the private funds we raise, we will we have assurances we can take out lines of creditor bank loans that could then, you know, become repaid as part of our FY24 budget. And I think, you know, we have been our original concern about not being able to afford the cost has been assuaged by the success that we've had in this regard. I think the other thing that you mentioned, Jennifer, that we also have talked about and that Secretary French had raised is that the AOE does have technical expertise to review plans that we have to ensure that they are are sound. And we have engaged a an education consultant with 45 years of experience, who is extremely well versed in all of the legal aspects, in special education aspects. She's had a Vermont superintendent's license and has reviewed our plan and feels confident that it's achievable based on how far we've already come already.
So I just want to can you help me understand the math on the years of experience? Because I was looking at it, it looked like it was maybe, you know, 26 or 27 years, and 19 of which were in Vermont.
I don't have that document. Sorry. I apologize.
I mean, I think your point is well taken that, you know, you you've hired someone who has significant experience. So, yes. And with regard to Tammy's point earlier about coming in for status reports, would you guys be amenable to coming in in a couple of months, just to let us know how things are going?
I don't see any problem with that at all.
All right. So I see Kim and then Tammy and then Jenna.
Thank you. So I maybe Jen just answered it with respect to the fundraising and how that jives with a sort of X 60 68 statewide funding for public schools. And it sounds as though you're talking about the fundraising being just about the transition, and that otherwise the taxpayers will either support or not support a budget voted in in March to be effective July 1. Okay. And I'm assuming that's legal. I don't I don't really know. I don't know if Dan knows where. And again, I guess that's your challenge to consider. But I just and I didn't know if as an entity, lines of credit, I mean, I know that's normally something voted on to for the electorate to allow you to exercise lines of credit. I didn't remember whether that was something you all had done.
Yes, at the at our first school district meeting, we voted, the town gave us authority to pursue various lines of, you know, notes, various ways to fund this, including bank notes, lines of credit. And they approved us spending up to a certain amount of money that we are raising now. And as we look at raising more money, we will go back to them likely in December to say, okay, we need spending authority for this additional money that we will need to use to get until to July 1. But we have the authority to raise we have the authority to raise money, to take out loans and to spend money. We just will need to get more authority to spend additional money.
Okay, and that's authority granted by the town or?
By the voters.
The community voted on that authority?
Yes, but it was a school district meeting.
Okay. Thanks.
And I guess I'd just say to Beck, I mean, we are working with, we have been in contact with the Vermont NEA about the transition of staff. And again, things have sort of been put on hold until a decision was made about who we would be working with and how. So this actually, if we were to be made our own SD, it makes things quite simple because we've talked to MAUSD about how that transition would take place, about our ability to maintain teachers' seniority. We will be offering, we will be negotiating whatever the contract is as soon as possible and be making offers to teachers well in advance of when MAUSD might be making offers so that they they can choose whether to stay with Lincoln or decide to stay with MAUSD. It won't happen all at the same time. And I would say, we do have the assurance of the vast number of teachers and administrators at Lincoln of their desire to stay.
I can wait to come back, Jen, if that's helpful. I do. So I have a question on that point, but it wasn't my original question. So I'm happy to wait my turn and hop back in line. Oh, Jen, now you're muted. I feel so much better.
Thank you. Tammy, then Jenna, then back to Kim.
Thanks. Jen, thanks again for sharing the memo with us to sort of give you an overview of sort of where you are in your process and for the update here. You know, I was reading through the helpful memo that Oliver wrote to Ripton last May that laid out sort of the kinds of things that we wanted to understand and be clear about as they were transitioning to their own SD. And of course, that went into the written report that we discussed this summer. I'm curious, and I was happy to hear that you were willing to come back with the status updates, because I'm looking at all of the items in the memo, and I have it up in front of me, you know, and I'm thinking that it would be really helpful for us to understand, for example, how you're transitioning IEPs, your transportation, financial administration and operations, employee contracts. And I know we're talking about that sort of at the tree top level. But I do think it would be really helpful for us to understand the details. And I know that you're working on the details. So let me ask, let me be a little more specific with the question Jen asked is, you know, I personally would like to see a lot more detail and just as a thought partner with with you all to make sure that we're all on the same page and things are going well. And if you need support, we you get the support you need before it's too late. So I'm curious, do you have any objection to providing the level of detail that was requested from Ripton on the items that would be pertinent at this point, right? Some of the items in this memo wouldn't be pertinent. So I'm hearing you feel okay with coming back. But I think from my perspective, I'd like to see a lot more detail around these items and just checking in with you to see if if that's if that was sort of when you said yes, what you had in mind as well.
Well, I think, you know, if you look at that implementation plan, it's basically written using the items that were requested of, you know, the categories of information that were requested from Ripton. And we're very aware of all the details that were were in that that email. The 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 level of detail, I mean, we're happy to provide information on where we are at at any given time. I mean, you know, we have, as I said, we've we've reached out, we're working with the NEA already, we're working with the transportation company already, we are contacting food service already. I mean, I think the the next update would be to tell you what we finalized. You know, I think the so so, yes, I mean, status updates, of course, and to the level of detail that we have at the time.
Right. That I think that that would be helpful, because I think sort of this memo that was outlined by Oliver to Ripton really touches on all those things that that need to be in place. And as you said, it wouldn't be so much as we asked for Ripton was a plan. I would hope that these when we had these updates, these would be things that were finalized. Because I'm sure you can appreciate, we have a responsibility to, right, to Secretary's French point, even if we decided to make you your own SD today, you know, we do have a responsibility to sort of make sure that's going okay. And if it's not, I certainly want to make sure that we have enough time to help you have the support you need to be successful that. And if in event you can't, there's still an opportunity for us to do another sort of arrangement before next school year. So thank you for that.
Well, I think what's most important is that we know we have that responsibility. I mean, that's, you know, we we are responsible for making this work, and we've made a lot of progress. And I know that chart does not, it didn't have the details in it of dates and this like that. And it can, you know, each of those items, if you ever work with project timeline, project management timelines like that, each of those has a subset of really specific activities. So that's another way to start to share that information.
I think certainly progress, you know, project mapping would be great. But I think, at least from my perspective, having an update where we can see what has actually been put in place and what the plans are going to be would be very helpful. And I would think that we would need to be seeing, in fact, for you to be successful, you know, that most of this is going to have to be sorted out by February, and that because you're going to be going to town meeting day, et cetera, et cetera. So I would think that by February, if we were to take the memo that Oliver wrote and sort of translate that into not not in terms of you planned you, but we have done these things, that that would be something that you could provide to back to us in some detail so that we could have a status update until by the end of February. So thank you.
That feels reasonable.
Okay, I think Jenna, then Kim, then Patrick.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you. Some of my questions were already answered, so that was good. I just have a couple others. I was wondering what the percent of the transition budget is relied, like you're relying on fundraising for. And so there's kind of different parts to the first question, I guess. And the second part of that is the line of credit. If you're relying on fundraising to repay the line of credit, and there isn't, if that threshold's not met, how, what's the plan to repay the line of credit before July 2023? Right? Because you're gonna because you're assured that out before you enter your new year.
Again, line of credit is one is one option. It's we are not, you know, we're talking with the bank now about different options in terms of repayment rates and interest rates and figuring out what what would fit our budget. Because some of it will be will add to our debt that will be included in our, you know, future year budgets as well. So I think that we are, I mean, I mean, we're really sort of in this phase where as we start this next phase of the fundraising campaign, we'll figure out how much more money we think we can raise, which will then provide us with information about what we might need to borrow. And we also, you know, there are variables, such as when we would bring on full time staff, that would obviously just be as consultants for the first until July 1, since, you know, we don't want to use private money to to pay for, we can't use fundraising money to pay for school staff. So it's a it's a fluid process in terms of the numbers, the number, and then what would be the best way to access the funds we need from the bank.
And then my second question is around the fundraising policies and procedures that you have in place. So families and students are protected from the sense that they are have a certain percentage that they need to contribute. I'm thinking through equity lunch, because it is a public school. And I think when you enter into an independent school, that has a considerable obligation for fundraising or for parent participation. And as a public school, that's not an appropriate ask. So I'm wondering, how would you have in place for families that they don't feel that they need to contribute financially to this effort?
There is no explicit outreach to families. We have a GoFundMe page that will go live as soon as we finalize things, which you can take a take a look at. And, you know, the 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 commitment within the Lincoln community around the school is significant. Many of the donations we received, people do not any longer have kids in the school. And so there's certainly no plan to say, oh, let's get everyone to contribute. And again, I think what you what, you know, if you, when you see our GoFundMe page, you'll you'll see what the the language is around that. And if, you know, it's it's an interesting point if a fundraising policy that explicitly addresses that issue may be worthwhile putting in place in our, you know, in our policies. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Kim and then Patrick.
Sure. Thank you. So a couple of questions now. So the seniority of staff, I'm not sure what is meant by that. It sounded like you were looking to arrange with MAUSD retention of seniority. And I don't know what that means. Once you are in different, these employees are employed by you and not MAUSD, they've foregone their seniority with MAUSD. So if...
Well, our discussions with the Vermont NEA is that that is something that can be part of the the contract. I mean, I know that that was a concern about moving to a new district, do you use your lose your seniority? And our discussions with the Vermont NEA was that that does not necessarily have to happen. So
I think if they were to, they're no longer employees of MAUSD, though. So I don't understand where they would have seniority within an MAUSD. They certainly would have seniority within Lincoln. So if you were needing to cut people, you would have a seniority list within your organization. I can't think of any way that if they are no longer employees, if they choose to accept your contract, they retain their seniority with MAUSD. Am I misunderstood?
Yeah, I think, Kim, the point would be they'd be treated similarly under the new agreement. Excuse me. So for example, they'd be placed on a salary schedule reflective of their years of experience.
Okay, so it wouldn't be related to any cuts needing to be made. They would be their seniority would be related to the universe of educators within the new Lincoln School District. They would be foregoing any seniority regarding retaining their position once they're no longer working with MAUSD. So
This is a pretty common place kind of consideration that happens as a result of merger. So it's it's not anything specific to the situation.
No, it's just that they're now employed with different bodies. So they're putting them on a schedule where they would go with respect to their seniority. I completely understand. That makes complete sense. So I guess I am thinking about this notion of a policy regarding fundraising. And I'm brought back to the question of how how that will play out after July 1. And if this is just a transitional funding mechanism, that's one thing. If we are going to see a public school with substantial fundraising as part of their budget, that's, I think, a little different. And I don't know that I even fully understand the legalities or what's afforded for within the statewide funding system for that type of a model.
No, that is not the that is not the intention at all of this campaign. There this is this is this fundraising campaign is to support transition costs. And there are other mechanisms by which the Lincoln Community School has access grant money for certain programs and things like that. But this is not a device being put in place to backfill the Lincoln Community School budget at all.
Okay. And then finally, the I think probably to Tammy's point, I'm suspecting you all will need an approved budget by probably mid January, if I'm remembering timelines correctly, for a vote in the beginning of March. So So um, it would seem as though you all would be pretty close to final on whatever plans to be able to establish a budget.
Well, we have a very, we have a FY24 budget that's been being worked on since we initially withdrew and has continued to evolve and has been informed by information um from all sources, including some of the information um and comments that were in the proposals presented by MAUSD and CVSU and White River Valley. So the um, I feel like we're probably further along than most school districts in terms of our budgeting process. And really, the um, the outstanding issue remains what, if any, um additional debt repayment we need to put into it if we end up borrowing money from the bank.
Yep. And, okay, that, that makes sense. Um, and I'm assuming all of that includes the, the securing of special ed services, transportation services, the centralized services. I'm guessing are well within your plans and, and not simply the budget for it, but the personnel for it, is that?
Yeah. Our budget, and I think Brittany may be on the line. You've, you've um interacted with Brittany Gilman before. She represented um the town of Ripton and she has um continued to be our um financial budget expertise because of her long history. And um, our budget is in the format of the, you know, Vermont education system, financial system and accounting system. And it has, again, um, been reviewed by people who in the know and informed continually, continually by, by people in the know.
And then, so the budget is one part of it. But then, I guess that defines then what percent of FTE you're seeking in each of those positions. And then just knowing sort of a hiring cycle and access to resources in a very um challenged environment in education, you're able to begin on that process, I'm assuming? In terms of securing your, your um central office-ish staff or service?
We have job descriptions that just need to be um circulated depending on, you know, we've had a job description for a superintendent, a part-time superintendent since we started working with Ripton. Because we knew that was what was going to be needed, a part-time job description for business. So when a decision is made, we are able to, you know, um, start to circulate these. And we do have people who have expressed interest in part-time work with experience, particularly if it offers flexibility in terms of location and um number of days worked, number of hours worked. It's actually, in this job market, not an unappealing situation for many people.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Patrick and then Lyle.
Hi. Um, so the question I was about to ask was around human resources, which Kim addressed ahead of me. But um, part-time in a market where there is a teacher shortage in Vermont. So you're going to do something very special to attract and retain teachers, part-time teachers. And do you have all of this documented and your strategy for doing this? And then my second question is, do you have a plan B if you are not able to fundraise at the level you intend to?
So with regard to the teachers, we are not down any teachers in our building. Our teachers are committed to staying. So we don't need more teachers. And um, I would also argue, whether it resonates or not, that um Lincoln is actually a very interesting place for, for um teachers to want to come. And especially if we are our own SD. Um, and there is um a little more flexibility in terms of how things. So I think the, the concerns about many of these things, and again, it, it all will play out. No one has a crystal ball, but there are some benefits, um, as well as some challenges to the current labor force challenges, being a rural um community, but also there being benefits to working in this kind of situation. And so we have an organizational structure that within the school is completely staffed. And the, the positions we will be recruiting for are, will be the ones that manage the central office functions. And as I said, um, there, you know, preliminary, um, we have not posted any position yet, but preliminary discussions indicate that there are people who have retired en masse from superintendent positions and other positions and who may actually be quite interested in a part-time position. So um, we will see how it goes and we will um adjust accordingly. And I think the, um, you know, the plan B is that um we will raise money from our fundraising efforts and that which can't be raised will be secured through loans.
All right. Um, thank you. Uh, Lyle.
I guess I'm a little less concerned about the fundraising. It seems like schools do that all the time for lots of different things, but this certainly is unique. The question for Dan, if I'm looking at the budget correctly, it looks like a $4.7 million proposed budget with approximately 200 students uh with an equalized people cost of about $21,000 per student. Is there an average statewide for uh per-people costs?
Yeah, certainly, that's knowable. I don't, I don't know what it is off the top of my head. And I think their budget is still tentative. So I, I don't, I think it would be premature to try to do a calculation on their projections until at least their board adopts a budget.
Yes, I just wondered how, where it was in the realm of per-people costs, so.
Yeah, Tammy?
Average per-people spending this state for 2019 was around 19,000.
So this is not then a unreasonable budget to propose based on that? From my, from my standpoint?
I don't know that I can say that. I'll just say, I'm, that's, that's what I know it to be in the 2019.
Yeah, I would just say it's premature to do that analysis.
Okay. Um, any other questions, comments, concerns? And let me just say, I think this has been a really fruitful conversation. Um, you know, on the one hand, I, I think there is a certain alignment of um conclusions that have been um put before the board today. But I think, you know, it's also incumbent upon us to do our due diligence and, you know, reach our own determination. So I think this conversation has really um pushed us down that path. And I don't want to cut it short, but um, if there aren't other comments or questions, I do believe we have a motion. Lyle, would you care to start us off? Oh, I'm sorry. Is this?
I don't think I can. I think I was going to talk later about Ripton.
Yeah, it's Jenna. I'm sorry, I messed up. Interesting.
I can just make it up.
I move that the State Board of Education declares that, one, Lincoln School District is designated to be its own supervisory union, single district supervisory union pursuant to 16 VSA Section 261(c), and that the supervisory district A shall fulfill its responsibilities through a combination of providing its own services where possible and contracting for services where it would be more efficient and effective pursuant to 16 VSA Sections 261(a) and 267, and shall be fully operational on July 1st, 2023.
Okay. Um, you've heard the motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Kim Gleason. Let me just make a friendly amendment. I believe it was supposed to be, you know, I move that the State Board of Education declares, one, that the Lincoln School District is designated to be its own supervisory district. I think you said supervisory union and I'll just clear the record with that friendly amendment. Is there any other discussion? Uh, Tammy?
Yeah, I would like to add something to this. Um, that honor before February 28th of 2023, Lincoln School Supervisory District will provide the State Board of Education with an update on its progress to becoming fully operational by July 1st, 2023.
Could we switch that date to coincide with our um February board meeting?
That's why I said honor, honor, honor before. So yeah, if you want to switch the date. But I, I think from my perspective, I'd like to see an update um by February for us to see where things stand. Um, and I'd like to see us use the same framework that was offered by Oliver and what we use for Ripton for providing that update. Thank you.
Sure. So by my calculation, that would put it at honor before February 15th.
Sounds great.
Okay.
I'm happy to have my friendly amendment amended.
Um, Kim?
Okay, there we go. Um, I am wondering, I, I think saying honor before the February meeting date works. I wonder if it's at all beneficial to them, given the budgeting process and any questions we may have, if that helps them inform their process before their budget is finalized to go before their voters? I wonder if it is helpful if we offer or consider whether or not you all would like to come before us at the January meeting, just for our scheduling. And, you know, I don't know to what extent that could be helpful. I know our um, our sort of review of the matters that Ripton had responded to helped to inform their thinking. And if that's helpful, January may give you time to, you know, adjust if necessary before your budget's final.
Um, I will say that, um, again, I would hope that we can um use some of the technical expertise at the Agency of Education to help inform us along the way, rather than, you know, as we need it, rather than um waiting for that date. And so um, I, it, I, you know, I will say, and you, I mean, preparing the reports for the SVE is a piece of work in and of itself that can sometimes detract from actually doing the work you need to do. So I would prefer the, the February date.
Great, no problem. I'm, I'm putting it out there just in case.
Thanks.
Dan, I saw your hand was up and then down.
Yeah, I was going to make the exact same point that Jen raised. You know, that uh, this is different context than Ripton. You know, we're, we are not examining the standalone feasibility of this entity. We examined other regional options and are determining, or my recommendation is that this is the, probably the best approach. Uh, so I would do whatever we can to support them in the work. And I think it's critical around January, February timeframe that they focus on getting their budget prepared. Uh, this is going to, all going to be new for them. And I would, I would go light on any kind of requirement for the State Board reporting.
Any further discussion? Okay. Um, Suzanne, would you be able to do a roll call?
Just to clarify, did we add that friendly amendment?
I believe we did, yes.
Okay, just checking. Because I put some text in the chat, if that's helpful, as a starting point.
So would it be helpful to re, the, the motion as amended?
I can. And I'm looking at the chat at the same time to see where that is going to fit in. Would that be like the second point on this?
It could be the third point.
I think it goes under the second point of Part C. Does that work?
Sure. Just, okay. Ready? So, move that the State Board of Education declares that the Lincoln School District is designated to be its own supervisory district, i.e. a single district supervisory union pursuant to 16 VSA Section 261(c), and that the supervisory district shall fulfill its responsibilities through a combination of providing its own services where possible and contracting for services where it would be more efficient and effective pursuant to 16 VSA Sections 261(a) and 267, and B shall be fully operational on July 1st, 2023. C on or before February 15th, 2023, Lincoln's School District will provide the State Board of Education with an update on its progress towards becoming fully operational by July 1st, 2023. State Board of Education will provide framework that Lincoln School District will follow in providing this update.
Thank you. Um, so you've heard the motion as amended. Do we need a second to the amendment? Any procedural gurus out there?
I'll second that, just so we don't miss the opportunity.
Okay. Um, so now I think we are ready for a roll call. So a yes vote would be to approve the motion as read by Jenna. A no vote would be to um not approve it.
Okay, here we go. Patrick Brown?
Yes.
Kim Gleason?
Yes.
Tammy Colby?
Yes.
Lyle Jepson?
Yes.
Tom Lovett?
Yes.
Gabrielle Lucci? Jenna O'Farrell?
Yes.
Chair Samuelson, will you be voting?
Yes, and my vote is yes.
And, I'm sorry, Gabrielle Lucci?
She's giving a thumbs up, I think, but having maybe the same problem I've been having all day with unmuting.
Gabrielle, for the record, you may type it into the chat and then there's a record of it other than your thumbs up, too.
Oh, I think I'm unmuted. My vote was yes, I'm sorry. I'm having trouble with the mic.
And that's unanimous.
All right, thank you. Um, and thank you again, everybody, um, for your hard work. And um, there, there was a lot of information that has been um compiled and I, I really appreciate the thoughtful process that has led us to this point. So, um, thank you.
And I'd like to also thank you for your um vote of confidence, if I can use that word. And I um feel certain you will be pleasantly surprised by the outcome. And um, appreciate your support and your concern and look forward to providing you with an update in February.
All right, thank you. So we are running about a half an hour ahead of schedule. I'm just going to forecast right now. I put um, an possible item M on the agenda if we needed more time with regard to Lincoln. I think, you know, I'm going to just take that off now. Um, and I'm wondering if we can go ahead and um take care of agenda items J and K um before the break. Um, Dan, I'm seeing you nod your head. So um, let's take up item J, which is the update on um the district quality standards. So, and I think two things that we need to do here. One is to adopt uh the Secretary's Engagement Plan. And two, assuming that we do adopt it, then appoint someone to the Quality Assurance Working Group.
Yeah, I can speak uh to this issue. Thank you. In the packet, there's a memo from me. And what I would uh ask of the board is to adopt an engagement plan today. It doesn't necessarily have to be the one I'm recommending, but um, I've outlined one. Uh, it's been revised uh since I talked about this issue in September. Um, just to refresh your uh background on this. Uh, so the agency's been charged with developing rules and district quality standards and finalizing that by February. In a law, it also specifies that uh the agency would be required to engage with stakeholders in accordance with a written plan approved by the State Board. So that's, that's the action item today. Um, since our last meeting, uh, which was the one when we were at Mount Eba. Mount Eba on the stage, and we talked about this, the central piece of feedback from my perspective was board members were interested in being inserted as well as stakeholders into that process. Subsequently met with Tammy and Kim, who are leading up the Board's work on education quality standards. And a central concern here is how these things are brought together. So that led to a recommended engagement plan that's in this memo, which is a revision and also an update on the progress from last time, essentially really seeking to insert the Board more directly into December as we begin to engage in the Quality Assurance rules. Right now, the district quality standard, just to, again, refresh things, has three domains specified in the law. One are business operations, the second is facilities management, and we've also added facility safety to that. And the third one is school board governance. All those things are in flight. The School Board Association's been leading the creation of the, the development of the School Board Standards Draft that was delivered on schedule last week. So we're starting basically to put some of these things together. Still this month, being refined and so forth with stakeholder groups. But really, in December, I think that would be the pivotal role for the Board to get involved as we start to assemble the pieces and start to contemplate for the first time Quality Assurance Rules and Regulation. We'll say first time, but in the case of this work, a very explicit effort on Quality Assurance. So that's essentially the outline that's in the memo.
The one typo that I saw in the memo is under January final draft, Paragraph E, I think you meant to note a February 1st, 2023 deadline.
That's correct.
So if there are no comments or questions, I would entertain a motion to approve, sorry, I lost my train of thought here. I would entertain a motion to adopt the engagement plan as presented by the Secretary with the small correction that it's a February 2023 deadline.
So moved.
So moved.
So, move by Patrick, seconded by Tammy. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Okay, appears that the motion has carried unanimously.
Thank you.
And I would then like to nominate Tammy to the working group, to the Quality Assurance Working Group.
I can second that.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of nominating Tammy Colby to the Quality Assurance Working Group, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Okay, the motion has carried unanimously, and thank you. So that takes us to Agenda Item K, which is the update on the education quality standards.
Thanks. I can start, and Kim, jump in along the way. We're co-chairing this committee. Lots of work being done. Certainly want to acknowledge Tom and Patrick's hard work on this committee, too. Just some quick sort of high-level updates. We continue to have periodic meetings, as often as every week, to review different components of the proposed revisions by the Act One Working Group. In addition, the Agency of Education offered us some technical corrections or proposed technical corrections. We reviewed those carefully with the agency at our last meeting in October, had some discussion around those at our meeting November 3rd. And so we're working through sort of two sets of proposed revisions now, and also trying to true those up. We have on the, on the schedule on November 30th, and I, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., a public open hearing slash listening session. This is not a public hearing that is like what we would have once it's opened under the formal roommaking process, but this is an opportunity for the subcommittee to hear from the general public about their interests, comments, concerns around both sets of proposed revisions that we now have on the table from the Act One Group and also the AOE. And again, that will be on November 30th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and certainly would welcome other board members who would like to listen along with us. That will be virtual, and we will be posting the information on how the public can sign up for a slot to comment there. We're gonna le, we're gonna limit comments to about two minutes per person and have people sign up in advance. So that information will be going out, and very much appreciated to Maureen and the staff at AOE for helping us coordinate that effort. I also wanted to just sort of set the table a little bit for sort of how we're starting to see the work wrapping up and coming back to the full Board. Just as a reminder, you know, we see our job on the subcommittee is doing some of the preliminary work and coming back to the Board with our assessment and some recommendations for the full Board to consider. But the full Board will need to consider sort of the body of work as well. As we've discussed in other meetings thus far, you know, the intent is to try to keep our work on the EQS in parallel with the Agency of Education's work on the DQS. And the Agency of Education has a submission deadline of mid-February for submitting the DQS. We'd very much like to keep the EQS, again, on a similar timeline, so that these two pieces are moving through the ICAR/LCR process at the same time. There'd be some concern, I think, to having them go through separately, since these two bodies of work will be carefully aligned with one another as well as, you know, intersecting in important ways. So with that in mind, we've discussed, at least at a high level, hopefully having a presentation to the Board at the December meeting. And that would be us as a subcommittee coming before the Board, providing an overview of the work we've done, some key considerations, and a draft document for the Board's consideration. However, the intent would not necessarily be to walk through and sort of have a full Board discussion on this. This is a large, complicated body of work. And so our thought was, we could present to you sort of where, what the works look like on our subcommittee, where the document is, give sort of some updates on where we think some of the key points will be for consideration by the Board, but then allow all of you to take some time with it and, and read and think, and then come back with a special meeting early in January, where this is the only thing the Board focuses on. And that gives us, collective as a body, some time to work through it, as well as if there is public to be heard at that point, we can have that space to do that. So just again, in terms of setting the table, I think at this point, as a group, you might be thinking that we will be coming back with a presentation to you, sort of on the work, and, and starting to sort of initiate a conversation with you about sort of where the subcommittee thinks the work is headed, and then with an eye towards an early January special meeting that's focused just on the Board's review and, of that work. And again, trying to have us, at least maybe at the formal Jan, our established January meeting, or if we need to, at the February meeting, having the Board take a vote on a document that then can be entered into the formal roommaking process. So, again, those are sort of the big, big-picture kinds of things. Kim, jump in, please, and add some context or clarification to that.
Yeah, I'm grateful. I think, Tammy, now that our most recent discussion yesterday brought into consideration and focus the Statement of Purpose, which also speaks to whom the rules apply. And so we heard from the Mont Independent Schools Association, had some written feedback from the VSA, VPA, and VSPA, and heard also directly from one of the co-chairs at the Act One Working Group, Mark Page. So that helped inform the discussion we all had yesterday in our meeting, just to give you a sense of where we are. And that was one of the areas of focus that we said we would approach last. We, the AOE, as they're focused on their work with DQS, we are in need of outside legal counsel, so we're in the process of securing that as well. And I think the only other thing to add to the November 30th is that we will make sure that our most current working draft is a meeting material for that, so that those who are coming to testify have a document to react to. So I think that's it. But thank you, Tammy.
So with the November 30th meeting, how soon in advance, because I know you're still scheduling subcommittee meetings, but how soon in advance do you anticipate having, you know, the then-current body of work for people to review?
I think we have it.
We have it? Oh, I'm sorry, Kim.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm pretty sure that it would be, since we made no changes yesterday. I think we'll probably need to say awaiting legal review or something on the top of, we probably need to say something at the top of the document, that this is really a working draft for us. And it's the mod, we made no additional modifications yesterday. So it probably is the document with some header that's slightly different that was attached to our last meeting. And we actually won't have any additional subcommittee meetings between now and then, given the vacation schedule. So this, that document and its draft, I think if we want to just take a look, Tammy, you and I, at format, to make sure we had it in some way that makes it super clear it's a working draft, would be that which people could react to. We've incorporated, discussed and incorporated that which we were, we were accepting from the AOE recommendations, and made some comments and notes where we needed additional review.
The only thing that needs to be updated in the document that we, AOE was very helpful in actually taking a work, taking the Act One proposed revisions and adding theirs to those. But we were working off another document where we had comments as we went along just on the Act One. So the two sets of, the two sets of com, two sets of comments on the part of the subcommittee need to be integrated into one draft, because what we've been doing is, as we go along in a Microsoft Word document, noting sort of our conclusions or where we have pending items in the comments section, so that people can see where the subcommittee has come to some agreement, what's still open, et cetera. So we need to, we just need to do that. And then my understanding is, we can make that into a PDF that then we can post for folks. So I would think that we can get that in the next couple days.
Okay. Yeah, the only reason I was asking this, because I know it's voluminous, and there's, there's a lot of, you know, detail. So, you know, just for my own curiosity, I was curious when that would be up. And just to know that the version that I'm looking at is sort of the version that we're gonna be talking, or that, you know, you'd be entertaining questions about on the 30th.
Yeah. And as, as I know some of you know, but I'm not sure everybody's aware, there was, the website, AOE's website was migrated recently, and some things came down and things, some came, things came up and again. Thank you to Maureen and Suzanne for navigating all of that. That is posed some challenges. So the intent is to re, sort of reestablish a baseline and get that, that document back up in the next couple days. So.
All right. Thank you. Patrick?
So I just wanted to add, especially for Kim and Tammy. So in one of our meetings, in talking about other community voices that could add to work of the subcommittee, I had suggested Susannah Davis. And I would like to correct that, because Ms. Davis is in fact part of the Working Group, so I take that off the table.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Patrick.
I had actually circled around, because I was pretty sure that that happened the case, and I checked in with the Working Group folks. So thanks for clarifying, Patrick.
So with regard to the outside legal counsel, we've put out a request for proposal and have requested those who are interested to get back with their indication that they would like to submit a bid by November 23rd, with the idea that interviews would then happen the end of November, beginning of December. So that is the, the current timeline.
And one of the things that Kim and I discuss is when we do put up this draft for sort of the public to look at for clarification, we will put a note up there that this, all of this will be subject to outside legal review, right? It is not just a vol, it's not just a big document, it's a complicated document with lots of stuff in there. And it will be important that, especially as we start to knit all these pieces together, that there's a comprehensive legal review to make sure that everything is consistent, right? Because as a regulatory body, you know, we need to make sure our rules are consistent with statute. And so we're gonna, the corpus of the work reviewed to make sure that all of these things, the recommendations, any other proposed changes that come through are all consistent with statute. And so there'll be an overarching legal review. There also have been some items identified in the course of our discussions by the subcommittee, or even identified, for example, on the part of AOE, that where we really would benefit from a very specific answer to a specific question, right? On, and so those things are also included in this RFP for outside legal counsel to provide advice on. But the document that will go up for the public to read and consider for the November 30th will not have the benefit of that review. And so we intend to sort of note that at the top. And we're hopeful that we will have that review done by the December, when we make our presentation to you by end of December. But just know there's a small chance that might not be the case, given the RFP timeline, and so we'll, we will adapt as we need to.
And I think it's just important to note that I did check in with the Act One folks to see if they had had the benefit of legal review, and they didn't have budget targeted for such things. They did have some attorneys that, you know, representing their, their appointed bodies happened to also be attorneys, but not acting in their capacity as attorneys. So I think I don't want to suggest it wasn't informed by their thinking as professionals and lawyers, but they did not have the benefit at the Act One Working Group of outside legal review either. So this, as far as I can tell, will be the first time that that will have the benefit of outside legal review.
All right. Well, thank you both, and thank you, you know, Tammy, Kim, and Tom, and Patrick. Because, again, I know this is a lot of work, and very much appreciate your efforts tying this all together. So thank you. And I'm just looking at the time. If Donna is here, maybe we can also pick up Item L, which is Ripton.
I'm here.
Excellent.
So I provided a memo to you that on, on September 29th, the voters of the Ripton School District voted to rejoin the ACSD. And pursuant to the terms of Act 176, the special provision that had been written for the Ripton School District, not only does that not require a vote of the rest of the ACSD for whether they would like to accept the Ripton folks back, but in addition, it automatically, by virtue of Act 176, makes it so. It doesn't give it to you to decide whether it should be so. But it, Act 176 did require that, that you make certain declarations to rescind your, your prior orders that would have made the Ripton School District approve its withdrawal, made it its own school district, made it its a separate supervisory district. So I did create a fairly, let me see if I can pull it up, a fairly lengthy proposed motion that you might be able to use. It does include a lot of detail, but I felt as though for historical purposes, it might be good just to have everything in one place. And then I also have prepared for the Chairs and Secretaries' signatures, a certificate that can be filed with the Secretary of State just to, to make, you know, to make it formal in one location that Ripton is now a town within the ACSD. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but it is quite straightforward.
Let me pause there. I don't know if anyone has any questions for Donna. Okay, so the motion is included at, in the Agenda Packet under Item L. Lyle?
Who's back?
This is, this is your moment to shine.
Oh, wow. So did you just explain what we're doing? Sorry, I had to step away.
Would you be willing to read the motion as it's set forth in the Agenda Packet? Just so we can read it into the record.
Happy to do so. So as a result of the September 29th, 2022 vote of the Ripton School District voters, and as required by and as required by Act 176 of 2022, Section 4, Subdivision D 3D, I move that, one, the State Board of Education reverses and voids all of its earlier declarations approving withdrawal and reconstituting the Ripton School District, including the board's approved May 19th, 2021 motion conditionally approving the request of the Ripton voters to withdraw from the Addison Central School District and conditionally declaring that the withdrawal would be effective on July 1, 2022, that the Ripton School District was reconstituted and that the reconstituted district would be solely responsible for the education of its resident students on July 1, 2022. And B, again, we are choosing at this point to reverse and void this as well. B, the board's approved May 19, 2021 motion approving continuation of the Addison Central School District despite the withdrawal of Ripton. Also, C, reversing and voiding the board's approved January 19, 2022 motion giving final approval to the request of the Ripton voters to withdraw from the Addison Central School District and making final declarations. I, that, or one, that Ripton's withdrawal would be effective on July 1, 2022, or 23, rather. Two, that the Ripton School District was reconstituted, would assume sole responsibility for the education of its resident students on July 1, 2023. And until that date, the Addison Central School District would be responsible for the education of students residing in Ripton. And three, that until July 1, 2023, the Ripton School District would exist solely to prepare for full operations. And four, that pursuant to 16 VSA subsection 261(c), the Ripton School District was designated to be its own supervisory district and as such would begin providing its own supervisory union services on July 1, 2023. And two, the State Board of Education notifies all interested parties that pursuant to subsection 4d 3d 1, the withdrawal action initiated pursuant to the former 16 VSA subsection 724 is concluded. And as a result, Ripton is a town within the Addison Central School District, which is its own supervisory district. The agency will prepare a certificate for the chair's signature to be recorded with the Secretary of State as authorized under subsection 4d 3d 2, whatever that next Roman numerals are, 11, something like that. So my legal expertise is now at an end.
All right, thank you, Lyle. You've heard the motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Kim Gleason. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Hearing none, it appears that the motion has carried unanimously. So thank you. And then why don't we do one final housekeeping issue? The two things that will follow our break are both, I've invited people to show up at specific times. So I think it would make sense, we'll, we'll keep those at their scheduled times. And then maybe the last item that we can take up, although I actually don't see it on the agenda, is if there are specific things that we want to put on the agenda for next month. So we've talked about a couple of things. One is we will have another update from the EQS Subcommittee. I believe Patrick has mentioned there will be a DEI presentation from Colchester.
Yes.
Dan is going to present, or, you know, Dan and his team will present on school safety. There should be an update on the quality assurance rules. We'll do the resolution for Oliver Olson. And then we may have some independent schools up for approval or reapproval. And I don't know if there's anything else that anyone is aware of that we can go ahead and add to the list. Okay, so this is kind of a long break, but enjoy it. I think why doesn't everyone turn off your cameras and your microphones? And then we will be back here at 10:50 for a presentation by Rattleboro Union High School. So I'm going to get started. This is agenda item J. And I included in the, the packet an article that many of you may have seen in Vermont Digger about Rattleboro Union High School. I had read it a couple of weeks ago, just kind of in the normal course of things. And I have to say, what struck me as I was reading it wasn't the fact that students overdosed at a high school. What's, because I, I don't think that that was, was isolated to, you know, one particular high school in Vermont. What really struck me and why I thought, you know, I really wanted to sort of open this up for a conversation, was the manner in which Principal Dom Kaler handled it. And I'm not sure, and she can speak to this. I'm not sure that, you know, she was even planning to have the, the response that she had. I think it was an organic experience, at least the way it appeared in the newspaper. So I, I was really struck by the whole situation, you know, how it was handled and just, you know, thought it might be a good opportunity to have a larger conversation about, you know, what, what Cassie is seeing, what, you know, how students are doing, what the state board can do to help in those efforts and, and really just, you know, have a conversation about it. So without further ado, I'm going to present or pass it over to Cassie Dom Kaler, who is the president, I'm sorry, the principal of Rattleboro Union High School.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. I apologize, I actually am doing this from my phone. I wasn't able to get it on my MacBook for some reason. I was having an issue with Teams. I am here with, I'll turn my camera, my assistant principal for grades nine and 11, Tracy Lane, and my assistant principal for grades 10 and 12, Hannah Parker. So again, thank you for inviting us. The incident that was written about, you know, in the Vermont Digger was upsetting and scary. We're all mothers ourselves and actually I'll have teenagers, not at this school, but at other schools. Actually, you do have a student here, Hannah does. So, you know, when we send our kids to school in the morning, we trust that their health and safety is being taken care of and, you know, we don't have to worry about things like that. And in today's climate, you know, what we're seeing in the world, as much as we'd like to keep it outside of school and we try our best to do that, you know, there's always a risk that it, it makes its way in these doors. And that's what we saw. And in the moment, the response was really a matter of, this is a community, we're all community members, we all have a responsibility in how we address this. And yeah, it really like, it, it felt like it was important that we share that with the student body. You know, and I'll be honest, I think it was one of the first times that the students saw us kind of portray that emotion of like this, we genuinely care about everyone in this building and that is why it's upsetting and scary for us. You know, and that conversation has just sort of continued on. Excuse me. So.
So with the, I mean, have you seen greater communication between students and administration since this? Like, do you feel like it's sort of taken some walls down?
Oh, definitely. I mean, I will say, the students, the amount of students that came forward after that incident to share information that we, I'll turn this to Tracy, you can see Tracy, than we were able to provide to, you know, the necessary outside agencies was something I've never seen before. And it just really spoke to genuine care for everyone in the building. You know, and, and we all have a responsibility to each other. So that was, I, I think, one of the biggest things.
Yeah, we got a, a lot of feedback, both from staff and students about the immediacy of the response and the transparency of the response. When we made that decision, in, in quick order, having the discussion with probably within about 30 minutes, whether it would be prudent to gather the, the entire school together, well, the two houses, but to have those large group meetings and address the situation with not only those students who we know are involved in these types of things, but to address the entire community so that they felt a part of, being able to help and truly felt supported, that they were made aware of the situation, which has not happened in the past. I think that was the biggest difference about how we went about it, was that immediacy and transparency.
And I think too, you know, lack of student engagement is just something that schools across the country have really struggled with, post, in this post-COVID world. And so I always feel, and I think my team shares this, the thought that if we can just find one buy-in for every student into the school building, regardless of what it is, like, that's how we keep them connected and we work at building that more. And so I think what I heard from students was it, our response made them, you know, recognize their value as a community member and, you know, and their, their buy-in to the school, really.
And there was talk about feeling safe. You know, there are students that hadn't felt safe and that this did help them feel safer in schools. We are being vigilant about keeping spaces in the school, you know, as clear as we can of these types of things so that students who are here and making good choices have that safety and confidence that we're supporting them.
So can you speak to, like, how are students not feeling safe? I mean, was it physical safety or like, safe to have, have difficult conversations with an adult? Or maybe it's both?
I think both, I think absolutely both, that emotional safety and physical safety. I mean, we know the climate of schools and particularly bigger, tough high schools post-COVID is, there are feelings that are not safe, bathrooms and, and places where people, where students are congregating. And it's been sort of, I think, a fallback for students to, to have that collaboration in not a positive way. And we want to change that and give them the opportunity to have those social experiences again, but with all, you know, all those health and, health and positive motivations in mind.
Yeah. And I think too, you know, we are sort of facing a epidemic of like, students not being available to learn. And what I mean by that is they're, they're coming back to school and, you know, we've all lived through the, the trauma of COVID. You know, some trauma more significant than others. And so I'm using my soup analogy, these two have heard it way too many times. But years ago, when I taught special ed, I taught in a program for emotionally disabled teens. And I used to say, some days I teach math and some days I feed them soup. And so what we're seeing is a lot of students that need soup because they're just not available. And so, you know, how we meet their needs, you know, and make them feel valued as members of the community and, you know, feed them soup. And maybe tomorrow we can teach them math. That's sort of, I think, how we work.
We really put an emphasis on our counseling teams and support, you know, different types of support adults in the community and also made a significant, you know, trying to get them to find people who they feel safe with in the building without sort of contriving those relationships and forcing those relationships, but truly having students seek out, have opportunities to be with adults that they feel safe with at school. Because sometimes they don't even have that out of school. So that's been a, that's been a big, big goal.
And we, we do an activity twice a year where we have students and advisories pick three to five trusted adults that they feel like they have in the building. And, you know, ninth graders coming in, they don't, you know, they may not have identified them yet at the beginning of the year. So, you know, we list a counselor, their house admin. And then, you know, we, we check in with them. And, you know, having that available in the computer for like, you know, I always say, I don't have to be your trusted adult, I just want you to have a trusted adult. So that's really important that we know that our students have that in the building.
Let me pause there, Patrick. I see you've had your hand raised.
Thank you so much. So I have a couple of questions and I'll start with the first one. How did you decide to go public with this? Because there are times when these incidents happen and because of family and other confidentiality factors. It just says that a student died unexpectedly. How did you decide to go public with it? Which is obviously a teachable moment and a great strategy for informing the rest of the student body about the disastrous outcome of misuse of drugs.
I think, so there have been several different articles written. I, I'm possibly the one that you're referring to with the student death is, is separate from that initial, the initial articles with the overdoses. The overdoses that we experienced and discussed publicly were not fatal. Both of those students were sent to the emergency room and received care and are fine, receiving continued care emotionally. What I think you are referring to is something that happened more recently. And we did not choose to go public about that. That was, it was presented in the public by other means.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
Sure.
Yeah, and this day, in this day and age too, with social media, you know, this was a Friday afternoon that the, the drug incident, the second one occurred. You know, and, and even if it hadn't been a Friday afternoon, you know, it was important that we were able to share what information we could because had we not, that's really, that rumor mill going. And so, you know, it's easier to, if, if we're sharing the information, be sharing correct information and then be really, really stopping any rumors or untruths that are being shared.
So, and, and when you were talking earlier about, you know, sort of making a, like, trying to get students to tell you, you know, what was going on. I'm curious, you know, because I think a lot of times people, students are scared that, you know, someone's going to get in trouble. They're going to get in trouble, a friend is going to get in trouble, someone else is going to get in trouble. How did you address that and maybe diffuse that? Do you want to speak to that, Hannah?
So Hannah Parker actually sent out a really great student communication around that.
Yeah, so I think, like with anything, our number one concern is student safety and student support. And so anytime we, I mean, I do this with my own kids at home. Like, if you, you know, if you share information with me that I'm unhappy about, you're not going to get in trouble for sharing it with me. That's like 101, right? It's about building the relationships. And I think that the, you know, one thing that came up earlier in the conversation, I think, is just that like, you know, with COVID, unfortunately, there's, there was a sever in the trust for students in schools because they were all of a sudden just sent home. And school was a safe space for a lot of students. And so taking that away from them, you know, they, they no longer trust the system. And so coming back to school and kind of like, being thrown back into it was pretty challenging. And I don't think anyone, anywhere was really prepared for the level of need that was going to be seen. And so last year, I feel like we kind of spent last year observing what that looked like to try to make changes, to make it work better. And this year, I think, you know, again, students don't trust. So it took a lot for the students that did come forward and share information to be vulnerable and just, and give it a try. And I, I think the response was really good in that obviously people were not getting in trouble for sharing information and they won't get in trouble for sharing information. It's more about, you know, having their children, their learning. So if we can be their teachers through the process and help them build skills to become great adults, like, that's, right, that's the goal. It's not to see how many detentions or suspensions we can hand out. And I think kids are starting to feel that more, which is great. There's obviously still a handful of students who, that trust was broken pretty big. And so their rebuild of it has been challenging and we're just slow steps forward and hopefully moving in the right direction. Just to add specifically a little bit to your question, on, on that day that we did address the student body, we both, well, all three of us were a part of it. And we explicitly said, one of the first things that we said, if you know anything about this situation, if you have any, and we said it straight out, any drugs, pills, anything unidentifiable, bring it to us or an adult that you trust in school and you will not get a punitive repercussion. It was that important to us that we tried to, to build that trust like Hannah just talked about and that we were able to know if these substances were in our school to the best of our ability and have people feel safe getting rid of it. we were able to know if these substances were in our school to the best of our ability and have people feel safe getting rid of it. So that that was, and I think that that did happen. Some kids did come forward. And even in smaller sessions now, if there's a suspicion and we're talking with kids, we discuss that if you are able to tell us the truth right away, we will offer you help rather than, you know, something that looks like a you're going to get in trouble. And we see, we see single students, their shoulders go down, maybe some tears, and we have those those discussions. And the key is, is that we do provide that help almost immediately and get them in with a counselor at school to talk to if they are willing. Uh, we make the appointment for them anyway. It's how willing they are, they are able to talk, but we we have those resources. We're using those resources to the best of our ability and we're looking every single day at how we can use them better.
Thank you. Um, Kim and then Tom.
Thank you. Um, the trusted adult in the building or adults in the building seems to be a a beautiful culture to be creating and I think the goal of all of our systems probably. And I'm wondering if there's something specific that you do in helping staff um lean into that.
I'm sorry, we're not able to really hear what you're saying. It's very jumbled.
I think you're asking what we do specifically to um support that that trusted adult?
To support staff in being that trusted adult. If there's particular professional development targets.
That is a great question. Um, our focus this year is really on um, you know, bringing back trauma-informed practices, which are very much already here. Um, and, you know, it was started prior to COVID. Um, and then, you know, last year I think was just kind of a year of crisis mode. Um, but this year, our main focus is, you know, as an admin team, we try our hardest to always be using trauma-informed practices with staff. Um, and how we meet their needs um and modeling that so that, you know, it helps them to meet the students' needs. Um, and we really do have an incredible staff. Um, I think we're so fortunate in that. Um, and and, you know, so many of them, like those connections are really real, well, I might lose them, really the most important thing.
And just to add on to that, I think it's also, um, you know, I think that there's certain staff that feel really comfortable being that trusted adult for kids. And there's other staff that don't feel like they have the training for it. Um, and so like providing opportunities for the staff that feel less um prepared, that they can always reach out to a counselor, a social worker, one of the administrative people to come and be an additional support for that student. Um, and part of, and I think part of that is where the trust comes from with students. Because if you're a student who's struggling and they go to an adult in the building and that adult doesn't feel comfortable with that, and that adult takes the time to reach out and find additional supports, like that's a trusted adult. That's an adult who's getting the job done for the kid. So it doesn't necessarily need to be like that adult is cre- is fixing the problem or the person who is um, they're feeling heard. And I think, you know, when I, I went into a community advisory recently and we went around and everyone shared kind of like, what's, what is something that you look for in your trusted adult? And almost every person responded like they feel heard. So I think sometimes the feeling heard is the response by the adult.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. So I'm going to go Tom, then Tammy, then Lyle. Patrick, I know you have your hand up, but I'm going to let others speak.
Definitely, sure, sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, kudos um to you for the way that you handled this uh, all of these situations. I I think um very commendable in a lot of ways. Um, and I also understand that um administration can't get their hands around an issue by themselves. It takes the whole school community. I guess my question is, how um involved is the larger Rattleboro community in in addressing these issues? Um, are there mentor programs? Are there mental health uh resources, uh youth services, those kinds of things that can be your partners? Because as you said, during COVID, these kids were home. During the summer and during the upcoming breaks, they're going to be home. Um, how involved is the community in helping address these problems?
I I would say that the community as is involved as they have the capacity of being, which means like not very. Unfortunately, I think like to no fault of like HCRS or youth services, which are local organizations, everyone is severely understaffed with a lot of need. Um, I work very, very part-time as a clinician, HCRS. And it, you know, it is, the need and the waitlist is really long and it's, it's a struggle.
Yeah. I will say though, when we can find opportunities, um, our student assistance program counselor, um, you know, has brought in a turning point, which is um an outside agency that that um, you know, works with issues of addiction in the community. And so, you know, um, he has brought them in to have talks with students. Um, we, you know, we try and use outside agencies in collaboration to bring awareness on issues um such as like a safe space or, you know, even the Rattleboro Police Department, just trying to inform our students on um things such as um safe internet usage, you know, um drug awareness, things like that. I think every opportunity that we can to use these outside agencies, we do. Um, and every time we have the opportunity to collaborate with them, I think the school as a whole is always open to that. But Hannah is correct, the, I think nationwide, we're, you know, there's a a crisis around mental health access.
And I would, I mean, since the summer, we've had a half-time social worker position open, so if anybody's looking. It's a fun school to work at.
Do you have the people, like the the police, do you have them come into the school or are they just kind of an outside resource that you use as necessary?
Um, no, they, we've done panels in the past, so they've come in and, um, you know, we might do a panel on something like domestic violence. And so there's different, you know, there's someone from the Women's Freedom Center and there might be a police officer and there might be, you know, um, other people, you know, other, other people that can provide information in terms of their, their role and and dealing with this. Um, so, yeah, I mean, I think, I think we look for opportunities to collaborate with groups like that, also so that they're bringing something positive such as education and awareness.
Okay. Um, Tammy, Lyle and Jenna.
Morning. I'll echo Tom and sing kudos. Not that anyone wants to be congratulated about a situation like this, but I certainly appreciate your professional and authentic response to a crisis. Um, one of the things you mentioned was sort of trauma-informed practices. And, you know, that, that is an important part of sort of the skill set, um, for, not just for administrators, but for teachers. I'm curious to learn more about the professional development that you have in place. Um, you know, the kind of work that you're doing with your teachers and your professional staff around trauma-informed practices. Had there been particular resources that have been helpful to you that we could, right? And I'm thinking about sort of scaling up your response to other places, right? Because, you know, we have a moment here where you've had a great deal of experience and it would be great to be able to sort of share how you built capacity to react in the moment to this situation with other places and they can see sort of, these are kinds of things and strategies and trainings that we've been through that are helping us sort of respond to these needs as they come up. So, thank you.
Yeah, I would say, I don't know if people are familiar with Dave Melnick at all. Um, he did come in at, and did an in-service half-day with our staff at the beginning of the school year. Um, and our superintendent curriculum directors and myself have been meeting with Dave to create a program for our school district. Um, and pretty soon, hopefully, I think in January, um, we have a cohort just from the high school that had gone through and done, gone through his level two um trauma-informed practice program pre-COVID. And so that group is kind, is coming back together in January to start meeting with Dave monthly to bring those supports and kind of continue moving forward with, with the trauma-informed practice in our building.
Not to plug UVM, but I will plug UVM is that, you know, UVM does have a new trauma-informed certificate for practitioners and leaders too, which is online, um, which I don't know if that would be a resource to you, but it's very good.
That's great, thank you.
And I, and I will say, just like Cassie, last, when I interviewed for this position last year, like my background, I was a school counselor, a social worker and clinician. And so like having, I think, kind of providing that that skill set in an administrative, an administrative role is really helpful for students to just kind of feel that wraparound support happening. Um, and it's kind of an interesting direction to move in, but so far I've really enjoyed it.
Well, and it's terrific to hear that you bring that background to the role. Um, but also I think sort of having that, having that voice at the leadership, in your leadership team and and is really important because I suspect that that has elevated the importance of having training and ongoing professional development and and work around trauma-informed practices in your school. And it sounds as if, particularly in this instance, having built that capacity, right, has, not that you're ever done building capacity, but having at least worked on that capacity really empowered you to respond and respond in a constructive and authentic way in this moment. So thank you for that.
Yeah.
All right. Um, Lyle, Jenna.
Well, and thank you for modeling for others what you're doing. And I I'm sensing that you do a lot of listening. Um, and and in the process of that listening, um, are there students that come to you that are angry because they just want to come to school? And they just want to go to class and they just want to go play football. And how do you ever spend, how are you ever able to spend time with them? Is that the, the student advisories? How how are you, how is it set up so that, I I won't say there's no average student, but the student that just wants to come to school?
Can I just? The only thing I want to say is like, I, I view those students right now as being compassionate community members. I don't see them being angry. Like, I feel angry for them at times, but their response is like, is anything but. So just a shout out to those kids you're referring to.
Well, and I think that, you know, this leadership team, sorry. Is, you know, we're, we focus a lot on like active supervision, we call it, which is like boots on the ground, being in the hallway. The first day of school, actually, I think prior to the first day of school, we all went into the storage room and grabbed a desk and put it in a hallway, like in a main intersection. And I joked it was my summer office. But like, I want to be present to the students. I want to know all their names. I want to say hello to them. Um, you know, I, when I started here, I was a dean of students and I used to joke because I, you know, ask a student to come to my office and my first phrase would be like, you're not in trouble. Like, I, you know, said I was going to get a bumper sticker for my car that said that. Um, but I do think, you know, as much as we work, you know, with a s- a population of s- of struggling students, like we also, I mean, all students are great. There's no bad kids, right? Some are just having a bad time. And we really work to meet all students' needs, regardless of, you know, how significant they are.
Just wanted to add a little bit to that. So, one of the things that we talked about amongst the three of us, because there are days like that, that we feel like we're focusing on, you know, challenging student behaviors and and look at this, you know, the other 800 kids in the school who are doing what they need to be doing. And so we thought about ways of incentivizing that or just recognizing that. And I think Cassie is setting up an ice cream social. It sounds a little silly for high school, um, but to look at, you know, those students that have great attendance and great grades and are doing what they need to do and offer them an opportunity to be recognized and have fun. One of the ways that we got things sort of some, some order back into the building, um, when we were expecting passes again and and teachers making sure, but when students come and go from their classroom, we were out in the hallways. You know, I think one of us were giving out chocolates and the other stickers and things. Kids responded to that, you know, 16, 17, 18-year-old kids responded to, good job, thank you. And here's a sticker for your water bottle. And we saw a rapid decline in some of the, um, you know, escaping from class. And still those, those kids that we're still working with, um, but there, it it made a huge improvement just sort of, you know, catching them being good, so to speak.
Yeah. And it's made a difference to the overall climate here, I think. Um, last year was a really intense year. Um, I, Hannah was here as a, in a different role. Um, Tracy was not. I was, um, you know, I'm the only admin from last year that's, that's here still. And, um, you know, we've heard from student staff, families visiting, that like, it's calmer. Like, it's, it's hard work that we're doing, but it's working, which makes a difference. Like, students are in classrooms. And if they're not able to be in classrooms, they're somewhere where we know that they are and they're safe. Um, and that's really been our focus this year.
Well, and I'm struck too by like the the common, like constant presence in the hallways. Because I think, you know, on the one hand, you're basically communicating that I'm here. Which makes it harder for people to, you know, engage in behaviors that, you know, they might engage in if no one were around. But at the same time, it's it's also a very like reaffirming, like I'm here. Um, and so I can see it playing both ways in a way that, um, you know, probably brings everyone up to the next level. Um, and I'm sure they appreciate the little chocolates and lollipops and stuff that you're passing out.
Well, and I think it, I mean, we need it as well. I know, you know, I, I'm in the interim uh principal position this year. And, and if I wanted to, I could spend my day locked in my office in meetings all day. It would not be hard to to do that. Um, but, you know, when I have days like that where I'm not seeing students as much, those are my hard days. You know, and I said to Tracy a couple of weeks ago, I could tell that she was having a harder day. And I said, I want you to put down what you're doing and I want you to go have lunch with students. Go sit at any table and have conversations. Because that's, I think, what I recognize I need on rough days. Like, I just need to go like, talk about the football game last week or, you know, mention a funny memory from last year or just, you know, connect with those students. Because I think that is the reason we all do this job.
Yeah, connection is huge. And we, we, everybody knows that, that we're, that we're talking with and to right now, that that is the, you know, the commonality that that people need for success. And we're trying to build that back up again.
Um, Jenna?
Thanks. Thanks for making soup. I think, and that's, if we don't make soup, then we're not going to do anything else, right? Like, so I appreciate you all addressing like the stigma too, that goes with mental health and substance use, identity, like trauma. I mean, there's a huge, huge weight that every student and your teachers and faculty carry when they come in every day. Um, so I'm thinking a little bit around, like, what does second order change look like, right? Like, you've laid a huge foundation here in like, kind of the next steps. When you think about like trauma-informed practices, how does that, are you thinking about like, what do schedule changes look like or um teaching approaches in the classroom? Because there's that training level that it sounds like you're heavily like invested in. And then there's the real like structural changes. Um, not only at like the institution, but also I'm thinking a little bit around, um, the amount you're all doing for. And when you make that shift to doing with the students, right, and around peer leadership, peer mentoring. And I'm curious to hear like, what's next for you?
Exactly what you just said. A lot of conversations, the peer mentoring, the schedule change, all of those are very active conversations right now between ourselves, the leadership, you know, the, the other um leaders in the building and students. And that is uh peer mentoring, one of my, one of my favorite um sort of models. And and not the peer mentoring necessarily with the student who is, you know, straight A's and perfect attendance. But you, um, those students who are having some challenges to be seen as a mentor and and able to facilitate a relationship that way has a lot, a lot of success too.
Yeah. I had a conversation with a student the other day. It's actually the student that sat on my interview committee when I, um, when I was hired. And it's funny, I didn't realize till after, but the, the reason that they asked her to be on the interview committee is because she refused to be in class. And they didn't know exactly what to do with this student. They were kind of at a loss. And so they asked her to serve on an interview committee and she shined. Um, and, you know, a couple of years later, she now, you know, being in the classroom is still hard for her, but she's found supports within the school to have a structure put in place that works for her and she'll be graduating this year. Um, and I had the conversation with her the other day. I said, you know, I would love for you to work with, you know, an incoming freshman that is really struggling with some of the things you struggled with when you started. Because I've seen you just like, I mean, blossom into like figuring out what works for you and what you need. Um, and that student was excited about it. And and, you know, we need that. Because again, you know, not every student is going to come in here and be the straight A student that plays sports and is fully engaged. Like, we're going to, we have a wide variety of needs. Um, but I think that there is something to be said for mentorship and student leadership. Um, you know, that's important.
We have a group of students who formed a council and I, this, for the board, with that.
Our student advisory council, um, that works with one of our school board members. And then we have
A voice.
Yeah, two students that um serve on the school board as members. They're not voting members, but they're members. And, and I love that connection because I was a school board member once myself in my own town and, um, it's hard work and you do. And it's hard work and you do it for the students. So, having a direct connection to them is important.
Great. This is such a rich conversation and I'm so grateful to you guys for being able to come in. I know we're over time and I also know that Cassie has some important afternoon activities that I don't want to run into. But Jenna and Patrick, I didn't know if you guys had any, because your hands were raised. I just want to, before we shut the conversation down.
Oops. Oh, so, thank you so much for this wonderful presentation and for all the hard work that you're doing. And so, my one final question is, I've heard community, but a key player I haven't heard mentioned much is a partner, a very valuable partner in executing this, and that's the parents. How are you engaging parents in these conversations?
I'm sorry, Patrick, we couldn't, we can't hear anything that you're saying. It's, it's very
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
No, well, like, okay. So, I, but Patrick was asking is whether you're also reaching out to engage parents.
Involving parents?
Yeah, like engaging parents in your team that you're sort of building.
That's a great question. I think if we're deciphering correctly, I think you asked, "What are we doing to involve parents as part of our team?" Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, just constant family communication home. And it's, it's, you know, it goes both ways of being available to parents, connecting with parents. You know, that, that can oftentimes be a struggle. You know, some of the parents you need to connect with most or can oftentimes be some of the parents you can't reach. You know, but I think in being parents ourselves, we recognize the importance of it. And I also use that with students. So, when, you know, there's a conversation with a student and maybe I have to share some information with a parent that they're not going to like. You know, I say to them, "I have my own 12th grader at a different high school and I know how I feel when I get news like that. And so, if your parent is upset, please know it comes from a place of them caring for you." And I never want to upset a parent. So, you know, and how you communicate that information is really important as well. Because we're all working on the same team.
We do have a faculty, a leadership council that's made up of, you know, some parents and community members. And we are, would always invite community, parents and community members in. But I think what Cassie said is correct. In this particular community, parent support is a challenge at times, a lot of the time. So, but we are keeping those, those doors open and that communication open as much as possible.
Thank you.
So, well, thank you, all three of you for coming in. And the other thing I really love seeing in this conversation is it's clear to me how comfortable the three of you are with each other. And I think that also speaks volumes about, you know, your ability to sort of work through what are very, very challenging issues and, and the trust that you have amongst the three of you that then you can, you know, take into the hallway. So, I know it's been a lot of work, I'm sure, but it shows. And I guess if you, if you have any final thoughts about, you know, what we can do to further support your work or, you know, if you had a crystal ball and, and could wish for anything, you know, what would that be? And then we'll let you get on your way.
I am sorry, we couldn't, we couldn't really get that. It was all jumbled.
Oh, well, just to acknowledge then, your work. And if you had any final thoughts that you wanted to share.
It did make out at the start of what you said, that we are comfortable with each other and that does help us, that does help us be a supportive team. We need that. Like, it, it, it is emotionally sometimes, you know, those days particularly can be challenging. And if we didn't trust each other to the, to the level that we do, I'm not sure that we'd be as effective. So, thank you for saying that.
Yes.
All right. Thank you guys very much for coming in. This has been really an inspirational conversation that we've had. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for having us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Bye.
Bye. All right. So, I think that takes us to the last, well, other than public comment, but we have a presentation by Champlain Valley School District. So, Patrick, I will turn that over to you.
Okay, thank you so much. I don't know if the folks are on. We have Mrs. Sells, who was a longtime diversity director here in Chittenden County. And she is here with her students. I think this is one of the presentations that students are involved in. And I am going to say, I hope the board is finding that presentations by the different schools informative. I know there are pieces of it that will, you know, directly or indirectly inform the EQS and look forward to presenting more. I know Colchester is on the docket and so is Spalding High School, maybe in January. So, Mrs. Sells, are you there?
Yes, we're here.
Okay, so, please welcome Mrs. Sells and her team from the Shelburne Community School. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Good morning. My name is Mrs., oh, well, LaShawn Whitmore Sells. Mrs. Sells, as students call me. And I'm the DEI coach here at Shelburne Community School. And we have a presentation that we would like to share with you about a journey that we had in Montpelier as well as some takeaways that we took away from our visit. So, we're going to do a PowerPoint, so we'll bring that up in just a moment.
All right. All right, I think we're ready now.
No, but they can't see our presentation.
Okay, so yeah.
We're really chatty because we share the chat.
Oh, but we want to see it. Yeah, no, they can see it. We're good.
But we want to see it.
We have it on the
No, but we have to switch through the
You guys ready?
Yeah, you go.
Just stay on the screen. Yeah.
We can see and hear you. We can see the presentation and hear you.
All right. All right, go for it.
Good morning. We are 7th and 8th graders from Shelburne Community School. First, we would like to thank you for allowing us to present. Secondly, we would like to take a moment to introduce ourselves to you. I'm Ivy Lucette.
I'm Gillian Upson.
I'm Ava O'Brien.
I'm Avery Ananu.
I'm Safran Chen.
And I'm Fiona Sherman. Next, you will hear from my classmates about our recent field trip to the State House.
Okay. Why were we at the State House in Montpelier? On September 30th, we went to the State House for a day of racial equity and education. It was a beautiful day weather-wise. And most importantly, it was a great day because we were able to connect with students all across the state on such an important topic, race. Our school district had three schools attend, Shelburne Community School, Charlotte, and Heinsburg. All schools in the state of Vermont were invited by a group of students called VSARN, which stands for the Vermont Students Anti-Racism Network. This group of students organized the day. They worked hard to make sure we students of the state are educated on race issues in the state and beyond. Students were able to participate in different learning opportunities such as educational workshops and listening to live student speakers.
Before we got started with workshops, we were able to tour the State House. Some of us had never been to the State House before. Therefore, it was great to walk around and explore things. By doing so, we learned and observed quite a few things. One prominent thing, ah, sorry. One thing we still discuss today is how we were, how most of the pictures there were white males, except Madeline Cunin, who was Vermont's first and only female governor, as well as the first Jewish governor of Vermont. We hope, as we diversify as a state, that one day we will see a person of color pictured in the State House.
What did we enjoy? We truly enjoyed that there were speakers from different political offices speaking on the importance of educating communities about racism and that we need to work together to solve the problem of racism. We also enjoyed looking at the historical art on the walls and ceilings. Most of all, we enjoyed that we were treated equally to adults, meaning we were able to speak our mind and share our thoughts. By doing so, it made us feel valued.
What did we learn? We mentioned these things for the simple fact that we as students don't get many opportunities to connect with the community and other students across the state very often. We feel this is a powerful tool for BIPOC students as well as non-BIPOC students to connect around a common goal, ending racism through education. We were able to see and feel listened to. Our voices mattered.
What's next? We're going to share with you a few things that we feel are very important and would add to all students' educational journey.
What do we feel is important? We feel that curriculum, hiring, and experiences are all things that are important. Curriculum is important because that is the only experience some of our students get to learn about the world outside their community. If the curriculum is not diverse, students are limited to understanding the community, state, and role. We feel as students, we need to be ready to learn, work, and live in a global society. Therefore, we need to have the curriculum experiences diversified in order to do so. In order to gain those experiences, however, we need to look at the teaching workforce. We are not sure if you guys keep data, keep data on how many BIPOC educators we have statewide or not, but at a glance, from our short time in, in school in Vermont, most of us have not had the pleasure of having a teacher that is from the BIPOC community. We are also not sure if we would have one when we go to high school. We feel that it's an important step that needs to be taken in order to fulfill this goal.
What we hope we can do here at SCS? Just to discuss with the administration how we can do more to foster inclusive and anti-racist school community. Create spaces for all of us to learn more about race, power, and privilege. Bring diverse presenters to SCS. Have more field trips such experiences for all students. Show the importance of having diverse teachers for all students in SCS. And create affinity spaces for students.
What we hope we can all do to help our school. Looking at retrieving the data on how many diverse teachers we have in the state. Talk with the administrators on the importance of hiring diverse staff for all students and also providing training. Help provide teachers with training on what culturally responsive instruction moves them. And lastly, support educational experiences outside the classroom for all students.
It is not our differences that divide us. It is our inability to recognize, accept, and celebrate those differences. Do you have any questions for us?
Click stop sharing. Click stop sharing. Yeah. I'm sorry.
So, while, while you're taking down the presentation, let me just jump in and thank you guys, first of all, for coming. But I have to say, I was completely impressed by your presentation. Well-organized, it was engaged, engaging. I am beyond impressed that you guys are in 7th and 8th grade and it gives me great hope for our future. Because I, I think you guys really have an understanding of, you know, what the issues are and you've got some really good suggestions about what adults can do and what, what adults can do in partnership with students to further the conversation. So, thank you very much.
Do you have any further questions for us?
Board members, any comments or questions?
If not, thank you very, very much for allowing us to present. Working with this group of students has been really wonderful for me and very awesome because they bring a lot to the table and they're very concerned about, you know, students that are, you know, behind them and their experiences and how they're going to be able to enjoy the curriculum and enjoy being in school. And so, I look to these voices to be able to help guide us as a school community on how we're going to move forward.
All right.
And I just wanted to say thank you to all the students. You're the future of our state and our country. And if you can spread the message among your peers at your school and your peers in the community and even with your parents, engage them in these very important conversations. And wishing you all the best for your future studies and your future career. Thank you.
So, and before you guys hang up, it looks like we, we've got some comments. So, Tammy and Jenna, I see that your hands were raised. And Kim, it looked like you might have had a comment as well. And Gabrielle?
Good morning, everyone. Hey, great presentation. Thank you for doing that. I hope you had some fun putting it together too. That's, it's sometimes fun to do that. One of the things that I was struck by your conversation is the absence of BIPOC teachers, right? And that's, that's certainly not just a problem here in Vermont. It's a problem everywhere, right? We would very much, the field very much needs BIPOC teachers. And so, I just might plant this seed with you, especially after your terrific presentation. Maybe you should all give teaching a thought as a career. I could see you all being really great teachers. And we need, and the teaching, teacher labor market needs terrific people like you and encourage your friends to consider teaching. So, thank you for a really terrific presentation. And I, like Jen Samson, I'm encouraged by the depth of thinking and your engagement in the topic. But I just planted the seed there that, you know, especially based on this terrific presentation, I could see all of you being really great teachers. And I hope you'll give that some thought as a career path as you move forward. Thank you.
Jenna?
Thank you for all the work that you're, that you're putting in outside of the classroom or athletics and everything else that you do. That, this is right up there with all the work that, that you juggle every day. I really like the fact that you're probably causing a bit of a disruption. And I think a disruption, when I see some of your actionable steps, is like you're stopping adults kind of to think about things differently, right? Like, if, who's presenting at your school? Who's coming in as a guest speaker, right? Like, who, how are we looking at the literature that we're putting in the library? And what does our curriculum look like? And who are we hiring? And like, you guys are generating those, those kind of moments, hopefully, for everyone to pause and disrupt their way of, of being and practicing. So, that's great work. And hopefully, it continues after you. And you're looking at, you know, who's in 5th and 6th grade and who's gonna, who's, who can carry your work. And you've really hopefully developed a legacy at your school. So, thank you.
Great. Kim and then Gabrielle?
Thank you. I was going to let Gabrielle go first, but I know how long it takes to get mute off. So, since my mute is off, I'll give you a minute, Gabrielle. And I also want to say thank you so much for sharing your experiences with us. And I was just curious, as you all are headed, or some of you it sounds are headed to the high school, what are you excited about there? Do you see your work continuing there?
Um, I will not be in high school next year. I'm the only 7th grader. But I think that when I do go to like, high school, that I will continue to do this work and go to like other conferences around the state and stuff.
Um, I will be going to high school next year. And I think this is really fascinating and I have gained many new like perspectives and my comprehension on this topic has really expanded just through this. And I'd like to continue to expand that. So, yes.
I'm also going to high school next year. And I agree with both of them. I think it's really interesting what we've been able to do so far. And I'm excited for high school because I know there's a lot more chances to kind of do what you want to do. And I feel like this is something I'll definitely continue.
I will also be heading to high school. And particularly, what I'm excited about is the high school I'll be going to, which is CBU. And at the high school over there, they're very, they're very much actively trying to work towards this problem to solve that we're trying to fix. And also the aspect of a little bit more independence. And also that, you know, kind of like, I'm sure as all you know, high school is kind of like where you find your um, high school is kind of like where you find yourself, how you build yourself and how you help others. So I think that aspect too is where it's most exciting for me.
Yeah. Um, I'll also be going to high school next year and I'm like, definitely going to sort of continue working to sort of like trying to, I don't know, like expand my knowledge and sort of like, this kind of thing. And also like, um, I don't know, just, there's like a lot of new opportunities, like that's a lot of new people to meet and a lot of things to do. So, I mean, be excited and try a lot of things.
I'm also going to high school and I know there are a lot more opportunities than there are because like, I know there, there is, cause I looked at the website of CBU and they have a lot of like groups for empowerment and things like that. And, um, I'm really excited because I'm probably going to join like a lot of those clubs.
Thank you all so much for sharing. It is exciting to see these conversations happening before high school. And also really great to know that you feel there's a continuum for what you're interested in. Thanks so much for sharing.
And I think it's exciting too to think about when you get to high school, you can even amplify your, your effect even more because you'll be in a bigger group, um, and have more opportunities. So, um, Gabrielle?
All right. I think I'm unmuted now. Am I, can you all hear me? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Um, thank you all for your presentation. That was a great presentation. Um, I'm also a student. I'm in 12th grade. And I'm glad to hear that you guys want to continue this work that you're doing now in high school. Um, I think it's really inspiring that middle schools are taking action against racism and discrimination and taking these issues head on. Because while the amount of student activists, activist groups have increased in high schools, they're still pretty rare and they're rarer in even lower grades. So good for you guys for taking this head on and wanting to make a change in your community. And good luck to you in high school or in eighth grade, if you're just going to eighth grade next year. Um, you guys are going to do great things. And, um, yeah, great presentation.
Thank you.
And I just want to leave with saying that all the students that are here, um, they most definitely have been leaders in our school community. And I know we're going to hear their names later on in life because they are leaving a great imprint here for all of us. And, um, it's great. Their energy is just great for our school community. It's awesome. So thank you all.
Thank you guys so much for coming. Um, this was really, um, just a wonderful conversation. Um, so, well done.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
You too. All right. Um, so I think, you know, we're now very much ahead of schedule, but, um, I will just pause here. I did, we are up to the public to be heard. Um, if there happen to be any members of the public who, um, wish to be heard at this point. Um, hearing none. Um, before we adjourn, I, I failed to mention this earlier and I just really want to recognize, um, Suzanne, I think was in charge of leading our meeting today, but she and Maureen really did a phenomenal job of collecting um, a lot of public comment, um, you know, keeping me organized, keeping us on track. Um, so thank you. Cause, um, you, you guys are sort of the unsung heroes in all of this. And I just wanted to acknowledge that. So unless there's anything further, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Or we could. Moved by Patrick, um, second, um, by Kim. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 All right. Thank you guys all for a wonderful.